I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission of December 12th, 2018. A printed agenda is available outside the hearing room and a copy of the full agenda, including the staff reports, is available at the front of the chambers with the clerk. The Open Meetings Act is posted just inside the doors at the back of the room. If you parked in the parking garage across the street to the north, please be sure to pick up a parking coupon on your way out for free parking. Out of courtesy for those attending this meeting, the commissioners and the staff, cellular phone usage is not permitted in these chambers during any portion of this meeting. We will appreciate your cooperation. And please note that the Planning Commission action today is final on Agenda Item 5.1, Special Permit 16004A. Any aggrieved person may appeal final action of the Planning Commission to the City Council or the County Board by filing a notice of appeal with the clerk within 14 days following the action of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission action on all other items is a recommendation to the City Council or the County Board. The first item of business is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held November 28th, 2013. And I know Maya has some revisions she'd like to enter in.
Um, yes, I believe you've all had a chance to look at them. So it was, um, and Amy, I had one change that I sent to you, Amy Huffman. Yeah, yeah. So has that been distributed?
Um, no.
Okay, I was just changing one word. Um, Amy, you don't have it in front of you. It's, do you have it? Okay. Okay, so it's just, uh, it's talking about the noise limits. I had a question about, um, it read, the Minister Reed Harris said she's from Sweden where there are turbines everywhere and the noise limits are lower than here. I, uh, was asking to change that to lower than what is being proposed. So is everybody's okay with that? Plus, the clarification to the ride-sharing, uh, spot that was distributed. Do I need to? Okay. Um, so it is a clarification to my suggestion to add a designated ride-sharing spot for the O Street Music District. And it reads, Harris later clarified that she's aware that Uber drivers are technically permitted to drop off in the designated taxi area outside Duffy's. Her suggestion is to create a separate ride-sharing spot that is not shared with taxi cabs. The reason, she stated, is that ride-sharing is an inherently different business model than the taxi business, and successful ride-sharing depends upon the ability to make frequent short stops in order to pick up and drop off passengers. Conversely, the taxi model is based upon waiting in place for passengers, and as a result, Uber and Lyft drivers are often not able to park in the taxi area outside Duffy's because it's occupied by taxis. A separate designated ride-sharing spot would benefit patrons of the bar scene and increase public safety.
So would you like to move?
I move approval as revised.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Any other changes or modifications? Okay, I think we're ready to call a roll.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Beckyus?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Motion carried eight to zero.
There are no items on today's consent agenda, so I will now ask Jerry to call any requests for deferral received prior to this meeting.
Okay, we have received a request on behalf of the applicant to place Item 2.1, Special Permit 18045, on pending until further notice. That would be Item 2.1, Special Permit 18045, to allow for County AG Agricultural District, CUP, consisting of 148.49 acres, more or less, for nine single-family acreage lots and property generally located at North 14th Street and Rock Creek Road.
Okay, so we'll entertain a motion to place this on pending.
So moved, Campbell.
Second, Beckyus.
Okay, I think we are ready to vote.
Okay. Finnegan?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Beckyus?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
And Harris?
Yes.
Motion carried eight to zero.
Okay, is there anyone here wishing to testify on this special permit at this time? Knowing that we just moved this to pending, but if you're here and you want to talk about that, you're welcome to come up. Yep.
You can come forward.
You can come up to the microphones and give your name and address, and then do your testimony.
I'm Dan Montague, and I live on the quarter that this is, this project is being proposed. I would like to address this aboard about the water problems in this Dakota watershed area where this housing project is. We have wells with 20 gallons per minute and then down to two gallons within an eighth of a mile. I believe this, this is a project doomed for disaster because the project shows nine housing plots with roads built, provided access to all the plots. You, I don't know if you have the, a copy of what they propose. I pulled this off the website.
Right, yes.
So what they're proposing. Okay, if adequate water cannot be found, the project will go down in flames and all the developers' expense will be lost. Lee Barnett is the, across the road, has a well producing only two gallons a minute. And he's just down on, on 14th Street. If I were to go ahead with this project, I would want to know that each plot could find a good well capable of producing the amount of water they need. I think you, as a board, would want to know this as well. I went to your county website to look for the rules and regulations of, which stated, if an individual water well system for each lot is proposed, data, quantity and quality of the water shall be obtained from test wells which shall be drilled on the ratio of one to each 10 acres. Unless the system is less than 10 acres, a test plot for each one. Results of the tests shall be complete in accordance with procedures acceptable to the Health Department. The report shall describe the chemically, chemical quality of water supply and flow of gallons per minute, including shall be information, depths to water pumping, well performance records, the nature of the water, bearing materials, the logs and test holes, and the inventory of wells on contiguous land. The report shall also include map or maps showing precise locations of data sites. Such reports shall contain estimates of the demand for water for the proposed subdivision and evaluation of adequacy of the quantity and quality of water of the proposed community well, individual wells. The results of these preliminary tests shall in no way be construed guaranteed in the quantity and quality of the water. So this is what I pulled off the website as far as, um, the water situation, okay? Is this, this is the information I would like, I would like to know. I talked to John Chess of the Department, Health Department, yesterday, and he told me that the rules have been changed to one test well to be submitted for the whole project instead of one test well for each plot. The safety of all of this neighborhood and for the county and the future homeowners and existing homeowners is at risk due to whether or not there is adequate water supplies in this area. I would like to know who changed the laws and why just two weeks ago this was changed and nobody knew about it. I would receive, I received a notice of the hearing November 28th, 2018, just after the rules took place. What I see is this opens up a can of worms for any developer that wants to develop anything in any area, and they can get it through by this new rule. So I want to know who did this, why it was done, and who's responsible. Why, and not, why didn't they take this off of the website where I just pulled this up a week ago?
We can ask those questions for you.
Pardon?
We can ask those questions for you.
Okay. What, what, what's the answer?
We don't know.
We'll have to ask.
We have to ask.
Oh, okay.
Right.
So I would, I would say that if this is done and this goes through and they find a test hole and submit this to the Health Department and only have to have one, they can do that anywhere in this whole quarter. That's the court, what I found out is from the Health Department.
Right, we'll get a clarification on that. Okay?
Okay, we've got 70 signatures opposing this project. And Lee's got, Lee Barnett, the neighbor with the two gallons a minute, and all these people here are concerned that they're going to lose their water.
Right. Thank you.
Could I get your address, sir?
Uh, I, I live on 1680 Rock Creek Road, the quarter where this project is. I'm Dan Montague.
Thank you.
It's Suresco.
Suresco.
Thank you.
Suresco of Nebraska.
Anyone else? Come on up.
I'm Leiford Burnett, 19595 North 14th Street. I live directly west of this proposed development. As Dan mentioned, my well produces two gallons a minute. I've been out there since 1979. I've made several attempts to gain access to better water, and I've had no luck doing it. Dan also mentioned that I polled the neighborhood, and I received 72 signatures within two miles north, or one mile north, one mile south, three miles east, and one mile west. Seventy-two signatures are of people who live in this neighborhood, many of them experiencing the same water problems that I am, are totally against it, totally and completely against it. Um, so I guess, I'm, I'm looking here in the room, and I see a lot of faces here whose signatures are on this document. I know there's probably nothing legal or binding about it, but you're welcome, welcome to have copies.
That'd be good to put into the record, yes.
Thank you. And, um, I guess right now that's all I got to say because I'm under the, the impression that nothing's going to be decided today.
Correct.
Correct.
That's correct.
Can you tell me, when you say that you've tried to remedy your water pressure issues, what, did you try to dig other wells, or what, what kind of things did you try to do there?
Yes, we've made numerous attempts over the years to have better, more water provided, and, um, the original well on there is restricted because if you, if you pump more water than, then you've got the recovery of that water hours away. We have a neighbor to the south of us, Bob and Becky Studebaker, and they have, on occasions, up to 250 head of cattle. And they are, at this time, experiencing tremendous amount of trouble watering that livestock. I also know of a, of a acreage to the west of me, about a mile and an eighth, that is, um, Rick and Roxanne O'Hare, and they told me that they don't even do their laundry at home anymore. They take their laundry into Lincoln and do it. All they do is bathe and cook at home. I think it's noted, my wife Lynn is here, and she was trying to whisper in my ear, but there is a survey that declares this very area as a, what is it called, Lynn?
It's, it's a very low water density. There's just a big area right in there that's, there's hardly any water. And years ago, before we were married...
Name, name and address.
Lynn Deschon, I'm his wife, 19595 North 14th Street, Suresco, Nebraska. I went to the 33rd and Holdridge, the Water Resource University of Nebraska, and there's a pamphlet there that he, we didn't bring. I was at the doctor this morning, and it shows that area, a nice big area, that there's just hardly any water. And when we experience droughts, we have to really, really watch and limit our water because there's been several times that we've actually pumped silt, and, and, and so we don't have water. Before, we were married, um, several years back, there's a property, immediately, the property line borders this addition to the north, and I looked at buying that house, and the man that was there, he said, "You cannot," he said, "The water here is extremely bad." And I had gone down to the water, it used to be in Nebraska Hall, and they pulled out maps, and I talked to the guy there, and, and, you know, they had everything kind of plotted out. And he says, "Lynn, that is a very bad area. They, water is an issue." And then when the, we've had several major droughts in the last several years, that it causes lots of problems. And then the farmer he talked about to the south of us, they don't have cattle there during the summer. They have, they bring them up and run them on the stocks in the winter time because in the winter time, they're not drinking all the water. And they have two wells, and they can just barely get by. So water in that area is extremely bad.
The property that she was referring to, which borders this proposed development directly to the north, is Stephen Hergenrader's place. I don't know the address, but he's a signature on here. And he has two wells, and he produces approximately seven gallons a minute from those two wells. Water is the primary issue for almost all the people in this neighborhood, and I think it's a known fact that water is, is pretty spotty out there.
Could you tell me approximately how deep you have to go for your wells?
My well, I know, is 180 feet. I couldn't, I couldn't answer the question about how deep other people's wells are. Since this thing has been postponed, I plan on canvassing the neighborhood and asking those kind of questions of all of the neighbors.
And, and can you tell me, is rural water available?
No, no rural, no rural water is available.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else, others? Come on up.
I'm Mark Hughes. I live at 20677 North 14th Street, um, which would be about a third of a mile probably north of where this development's going to be, right on 14th on the west side. Just built there two years ago. Just to, just to kind of reinforce what Mr. Burnett was talking about, water-wise, um, I've got, I had to drill five holes on my property to find enough water for our house, and one of them we cased, it was two, two gallons a minute, which is not enough. Um, so we, we, we drilled another one about 700 feet back from where the house was to the west, and did find eight gallons a minute, and that's borderline enough for a, for a house, so just, and mine's 93 foot, 93 foot deep. If they, he said if he went any, any deeper, he would have hit, uh, something not, not good, shale or something not good for a well, so he could quit. So, but I just wanted to reinforce kind of what they're saying and stuff, so that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thanks.
You can't come up again. One five-minute time. You can come back when this, if this comes to a public hearing, you can come back again.
Cindy Arias, 433 Agnew Road. And I'm about two miles, um, as the crow flies, maybe a mile and a half, neighbors with Hughes. And I just wanted to contribute to this because in 2001, when we bought our property, we sunk a well, we have 80 acres, and you got to wonder, you know, if there's water throughout it. I know because we had it plotted off in 20-acre plots at that time, that was the rules. And that well came in at a minimal of eight gallons per minute. It went 110 feet deep. It was the second shot, at the second time that we drilled it, we got a well of eight. Um, we didn't move out there until six, and in that time, that well dried up. It went down to two, which we saw as inadequate to supply our home. So that was a little scary. We also wanted geothermal in our new home. We had to move the site a little bit and had two more attempts at a well, and we ended up with one that was 12. Um, and that's what we're living on now. We have to have a pressure tank to create enough pressure for our house, but there's always a concern that that's going to dry up again because this is 50 yards from the other one. So that's how different it can be. And our neighbor, just to the west of us, a half a mile, um, theirs dried up as well, and they drilled and they got a saltwater tank, uh, saltwater is what came up. So it's very iffy, it's hit and miss, and then they dry up or you'll hit salt. I know south of Agnew Road, which is what we are, um, is just, um, it's just a little area there that's just hit and miss. I don't know, I know one of the wells we hit was, um, 80-some feet, but it wasn't adequate. And then the 110 was, um, but there was another one that we went down to 140. And these are all within six acres. So you don't know what's going to be down there and what's not, or if it's going to last or not. So, that's all.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to testify today?
I'm Lonnie Rec, live at 3200 Rock Creek Road, Davie. And as you can probably see from some of our attendees here today, there's an awful lot of people that are opposed to this development. We're concerned neighbors, owners, and we're really opposed to the rezoning of the property as Lancaster County currently has 20 acres for developments and has to express additional rezoning to go less. We respectfully ask for the no zoning change on this parcel, not because we're anti-growth, but because we're enthusiastic supporters of smart, planned urban development. Some of our compelling reasons include the proposal did not allow the current property owners within one mile of zoning request to be properly informed and knowledgeable of the special permit requirements. The mailing was dated on the 28th of November, we did not receive it till the 1st. This is the 12th. It appears that the developers and owners of the property did not fully intend to disclose their intention of developing the property. Only recently was the plot plan submitted and surprised the majority of all of us, the affected owners in this area. The proposed rezoning information sent out by the Planning Commission was sketchy at best. We only received notice by mail, like I say, just a little over a week ago. Agriculture is still a major factor in Lancaster County's economy with about 90% of the land area of the county being used for ag production. This proposal hits the area with another permanent decrease in the land use for ag production. There's currently a very well-defined community form in Lancaster County. The main land use is, again, is agriculture. Of the approximately 846 miles, square miles in the county, the Lincoln City limits cover only 95 square miles, or 95 square miles, or just over 11% of the land, despite having 90% of the county population. The urban area has expanded in a contiguous pattern with well-defined edges between Lincoln and ag uses. The leapfrog development, which was, is common dominating forces in other metropolitan areas, is absent here, and most urban development takes place in Lincoln or in the incorporated towns surrounding them. However, the leapfrog approach developed to development appears to be growing in Lancaster County due to the community unit plans like this proposal, if they're approved. Inappropriate use of community unit plan development in an area of stability, which we consider this to be, the neighborhood where the rezoning is being proposed, very few residential changes have occurred in this area, yet the proposed rezoning seeks significant change. Proposed development is large-scale, would be surrounded by ag property with only limited exception. If approved, this ag rezoning would be one of the largest residential community unit plans developed in northern Lancaster County. What you see is not what you always get. The developer and owners of this property just recently sent in subdivision plot plans that show nine proposed three-acre sites and an additional nine lots as part of the development in the future. With the possible extension of the streets to the east that are shown possibly as temporary as cul-de-sacs, that could possibly include an additional 30-plus acreage sites. And you've heard the testimony from the people talking about their wells. There's 148 acres, I believe, on this. Just how many sites is the Planning Commission going to be allowed to develop, we don't know. Proposed rezoning, I believe, is inconsistent with Chapter 27.65, Community Unit Plan, insufficient road structure. Nearby intersections simply cannot handle dramatic increase in traffic that will occur if rezoning is permitted. Agnew Road, a half-mile to the north, this proposal is a ready intersection that has had multiple accidents and has in the past had to have a flashing red and yellow signal to warn drivers of the impending risks and to slow down. The signal was recently damaged by a vehicle during an accident, took a long time to get it back up. The additional traffic loading on North 14th Street and Agnew Road would present additional danger to all the students traveling to the Raymond Central Junior High School as well as neighbors and living in this area. Additionally, both county roads are narrow and do not allow for turn lanes, notably limiting the traffic flow for this area, especially the development area. Drivers accessing North 14th from either direction on Rock Creek Road already have a sight distance issue looking to the north. To the north is a hill that people have to come across, then at 55 and 60 mile an hour, it's a sight distance issue. They have to rush their approach to get on the roadway. Additional traffic from this proposed rezoning area will completely complicate this access. Significant increase in traffic flow at this intersection will result from this rezoning is a notable risk to the area, again, I said, the students and the local traffic, in addition to the people that don't even use these roads, and they just come down them once in a while. If the rezoning is approved and planned development completed, the residential neighborhoods surrounding the property will witness a dramatic increase in traffic to a ready heavily congested area, which we consider, especially in the mornings and the afternoons and evenings. We recently were shown that the developer now wants the roadways within the private development to be maintained by Lancaster County. This again puts an additional strain on the County Roads Department that is already having an issue with maintenance activities within the county. This puts undue burden on the county road maintenance budgets that try hard to present good drivable roadways for the existing residents and owners. A plot plans for development of a community unit plan had not been filed in writing within the Planning Department until late, late last week. Without being able to have sufficient time for all of the concerned neighbors to review these plans, this application should not be approved. The developer and their owner are holding the surrounding property owners at bay by not showing what the full intention of this... not showing what the full intention of this CUP is now or in the future. Protect dag land is apparently not protected anymore.
Can you go quickly? Because you're allowed five minutes and just if you can wrap up here soon, it'd be great.
In addition to what some of the other residents and landowners have stated about the wells and that type of thing, wells are really preeminent here. The additional traffic flow in this area and the additional development of this land, this land is 148 acres, going to be proposed for nine. There are six additional lots shown, possible development with future development to the east with those roadways. I don't believe this is just a nine-acre development. We definitely have an issue with that. Just to wrap up, one more thing to say. They're going to put nine wells in here with nine septic systems. I didn't see anything for a lagoon. Septic systems are vulnerable as well as the wells around them for E. coli bacteria. Without enough protection for that, these wells and any other wells in the surrounding area will also be affected by the E. coli.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Just queue up.
Yes, my name's James Lampkin. I live at 20805 North 27th Street, catty corner a mile to the proposed development on the section of land the development's taking place. And we have two wells. We lived there, moved in there in 1987, and we have two wells on our property. I've had one well at the time and it ran dry and we were sucking sand. Our second well we put in and it's 180 feet deep. And during the drought years, we have a sulfur smell in our water. And so we are very concerned about more people pumping water out of those water tables. So I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Come on up.
Hello. My name's Steve Weyer, and I live just right on the outside edge of where this property's going to be, like 10 feet maybe.
Address?
So everybody's talking about well water today.
Could you provide an address?
Oh, I'm sorry. 19401 North First Street.
Thank you.
First and Rock Creek Road. Everybody seems to be talking about water, which I've had that same problem. My wells have gone dry. It goes up and down. The water table really fluctuates a lot out there. It seems like, but the reason I've been sitting here listening to all of this, I purchased my land in 1969, and my brother and I went together and we bought 20 acres. At that time, the county said you had to have five acres to build. So I buy my land, I go to build my house. Sorry, it's 20 acres. You can't build anymore. So here I'm stuck with some land I can't do anything with. So what am I going to do? I sued you guys twice. And I won, fortunately. But it seems kind of ironic that in 1979, you needed five acres. 1985, when I built, you needed 20 acres. Now you're going back down to three acres. It seems kind of strange to me. Plus, I had to pay all my court fees, all my lawyer fees. And I have a beautiful house and beautiful property, but it seems like you guys are going back and forth here. That's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Again, there's no action today. This is on pending now, so there'll be, if it ever comes up to public hearing, there'll be another notification.
And I wanted to ask if there were any expertise communications of the commission.
Sorry, I forgot to do that. Okay, I see none.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jerry. Okay, we will now proceed to public hearings. The staff will make a brief presentation, and the applicant will then be requested to present his or her testimony, followed by those who wish to testify in support, followed by those who wish to testify in opposition. If during your testimony you have copies of documents or materials you would like distributed to the planning commission members and/or included as part of the record, please provide that information to Jerry for distribution. The staff will then be given an opportunity to respond to the testimony, and then the applicant shall have an opportunity for rebuttal. Each person testifying should state their name and address and shall have five minutes to speak unless there are additional time is requested and granted. The timer will go off after four minutes. Then you will have one minute to wrap up your testimony. The planning commission will vote immediately at the close of the public hearing unless the commission votes to defer action or continue the public hearing. Jerry, please call the first public hearing item.
Item 5.1 is special permit 16004A for the renewal of a special permit for a soil mining operation on property generally located at South 68th Street and Saltillo Road. This is final action on this item unless an appeal is submitted within 14 days, appealing the planning commission's decision to the city council. Staff recommendation is for conditional approval. Are there any expertise communications to be disclosed?
I see none. Tom?
Tom Chayka, planning staff. This application is for soil excavation. It's basically a renewal of one that was previously approved in May of 2016. This is one of the rare special permits that actually expires. They have a three-year time limit, and then they have to ask for a new special permit. The land is located at South 68th and Saltillo Road, right here. Really about the only difference between this and the previous plan that was approved is that they're now moving the area of excavation further to the north. Let's see. Yep, make sure I had that right. Previously, I believe the excavation area was more further down here on the south end of the property. Now it's expanding further to the north. And the estimated cubic yards to be excavated in this new area is 550,000 cubic yards. The only other thing new with this one is that the county engineer wanted a road maintenance agreement for South 68th Street. That has been worked out with the owner, so I think everything is good to go on it.
Questions for Tom?
I have one. When this, when this was on the agenda in 2016, I think it was on consent, is there anything different about this application that made it go to a special or to a public hearing?
The only difference is that originally this was going to be on consent. They asked for a deferral two weeks ago to work out the road maintenance agreement. And that's really the only reason it came off of consent was because of the deferral.
So it would have been on consent if it weren't for that? Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
I have a question. Concerning the movement of the excavation area further north, it means it's closer to Saltillo Road and with prevailing winds coming out of the south, I'm wondering if public safety had anything to say about dust blow over the road? Anything?
No. And the access is way on the south on 68th, and that access point remains the same. This comes back up. Access is way down here, and that's, it's still the same. There's no access off of Saltillo.
Right. It's not so much the access as it is the amount of dust that might be raised, and Saltillo's already a challenging job.
Yeah, one of the requirements is that they have to maintain dust control on-site. So that is a requirement.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Tom? Dick?
Tom, that 550,000 cubic feet, approximately how much depth from the area would that be taking?
I think I'll let the applicant's engineer answer that because I don't know the answer to that.
Okay. Okay. Anything else for Tom? Okay, then we will take testimony from the applicant.
Good afternoon. Mike Eckert with Civil Design Group here today on behalf of Gena Trucking and Excavating and the ownership group on this land, Triple SNL Partnership. So as Tom explained, it's pretty straightforward. It's a renewal. And yes, the reason we deferred was because we didn't know what the county engineer was asking for exactly in the road maintenance agreement. But now we know what that is and we're willing to do what they asked. And so that'll go into writing. So to address a couple of your questions quickly, note number three on the special permit does say, oh, wind and water erosion must be controlled. So there are some teeth there. In the event they're not, and it's a special permit, the city or county could step in. And Commissioner Campbell, the depth varies, you know, on the south side of the site, they're going as much as 10 to 15 foot deep because it's where most of the deepest, lowest soils are. And as we move further north, it's less, probably generally cuts in the three to six-foot range. And so wanted to expand and renew this site mainly because it's close proximity to the south beltway, and there will be a lot of dirt required for that. So they'll be in a position to be able to provide that. So that was one of the main reasons for the renewal and the fact that it's continuing to serve South Lincoln as a mining permit rather than have trucks haul it from some of the northern permits, northern sites, I should say, that there's a site south that they can do a lot of that and limit their trips. So with that said, I think we're in agreement with everything that the staff has laid out and the county engineers, and we appreciate your vote.
Thanks. Any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there testimony in support of this item? Is there testimony in opposition of this item? Do we have any other staff questions? Okay, Mike, you don't need to come up and rebut. Okay, I think we're ready to entertain a motion then.
Move approval back, yes.
Second, Campbell. Okay, discussion? Pretty straightforward. Obviously, it was on consent and was taken off for just clarification on some access points, but it sounds like it's a pretty straightforward request. I think we're ready to vote.
Okay, this is for conditional approval of special permit 16004A. Finnegan?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Motion carried, eight to zero. Okay, moving on. Under text amendments, item 5.2 is text amendment number 18014, amending various sections of Title 27 of the Lincoln Municipal Code relating to the parking matrix and parking requirements and also amending various chapters of Title III Design Standards for Zoning Regulations, revising the design standards for screening and landscaping requirements and repealing said sections as hitherto existing. Staff recommendation is for approval. Are there any expertise communications to be disclosed?
Yes.
Dean?
I had lunch yesterday with Mr. Hunziker, who's a longtime friend, and we often have lunch. But I can say that we covered lots of topics, but no inappropriate planning conversation.
Did I hear one over here?
Yeah. An email was forwarded to me with Leba's decision to oppose the last hearing we had, but I received it after the hearing. So it was technically for the last hearing, but I'm disclosing it now.
Okay.
Noted. Thank you.
Jerry, do I need to restate mine? I mean, it hasn't changed from last time.
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Colin?
Colin Christopher, planning department. So at the November 14th Planning Commission, you gave us the direction to reach out to the development community and to hear their input and feedback. We did do that. We reached out overall to the development community and specifically anyone who spoke at the previous meeting and offered to meet individually or in groups with those who were interested in having that discussion. We did hold a number of meetings. I believe those meetings included almost everybody that did speak at the last, the last hearing. I think there were some really good conversations that came out of those. I think we found some common ground and some compromises that we felt we could achieve. I won't tell you that we compromised on every issue. I think there are certainly some differences of opinions on specific parts of this revision, but I think overall the meetings were helpful and hopefully productive. So planning department sent out a memo on Monday that summarizes what the proposed changes are. We sent that to you, but we also sent it out to the larger development community and again, those, anyone who attended those meetings. So hopefully, anyone that was interested in what the specific changes are had a chance to look at that. But it is, at this point, a revision of a revision. There might be some confusion on where we're at now. So I think it would be helpful just to go through each of these one by one and kind of explain where we are. So there are nine revisions overall. I'll just go through them quickly here. The first one relates to the allowed window from when a permit or a landscape or a project is completed, and that would be defined by when there's a final inspection approval and when the landscape actually has to be installed. So we allow a gap there typically because oftentimes a project is finished in a month or a time of year when it's not appropriate to be installing landscaping. We, in the existing standard, allow 12 months. We believe that to be a little excessive, so as part of the original proposal, we cut it down to six. We did hear specific recommendations to maybe increase that a little bit, and the scenario that was presented to us was that if a project got finished in November, six months goes out to April, and April is a very busy time of year for local contractors, landscape contractors. And so in order to not negatively impact developers or property owners based on something they can't really control, we've added to that window from six to eight months. So it is an overall reduction, but it's an increase from what the last proposal was. Item two gets into a potential reduction of the required landscape strip when alternative methods are being used. So this is something that is actually in our downtown design standards where we allow, instead of a six-foot strip, a three-foot strip if it's being used for a low wall or a fence to accommodate that screen, that parking lot screen. We don't explicitly state that in the larger design standards, and so we have now added that as part of this proposal. That will apply to all properties, but specifically, we're hoping that will allow some additional flexibility for narrow or shallow lots. Item number three gets into the internal island breaks that were going to be required. So I will quickly try to point out kind of where we were at. So the previous proposal said that you're required to put islands at the end of each row, whether it be a double row or a single row. But then in addition, we were proposing that additional internal islands be required to break up consecutive stalls of more than 20 on single rows, so that would be here, or for double rows, breaking it up so there are no more than 40 consecutive stalls. This current proposal eliminates the single row requirement. So now it says we're still requiring an additional island here in the middle in the case where you have 40 consecutive stalls. But along the edges, the perimeters of the parking lot where you have single rows, that we would not require that additional stall or that additional island. The hope is that for smaller parking lots, that will preserve some necessary parking spaces that might get eaten up by that requirement. Item number four goes into the percentage requirement that we included in the original proposal. Previously, we had a requirement that said, depending on the size of your parking lot, that a certain percentage of that lot needed to be landscaped with internal islands. This is what that table looked like. So it broke up parking lots into various sizes. As part of this new proposal, we are essentially eliminating those first two rows and saying any parking lot under 200 stalls or less will not be required to meet that percentage requirement. They will still be required to provide the islands at the end of rows, like I just explained, but there won't be a total percentage associated with that. It will still be in effect for larger parking lots over 200 stalls. It will still be in effect for larger parking lots over 200 stalls. That accomplishes one of our goals of trying to balance the need for parking in large lots with the need to enhance those and soften those parking lots with landscaping, but won't negatively impact the smaller lots or medium-sized lots in the same way. Item five gets into increased flexibility in where shade trees can be located in parking lots. So if I bring this diagram back up, we have an overall requirement for shade trees, and for parking lots, and it basically says, you're required to provide one shade tree minimum plus one per 6,000 square feet of your parking lot. Within that, so on an example like this, if we calculate out the size of this parking lot, our requirement says that six trees are required overall. Then there's an additional requirement that says, each double-row island will require a tree. That is essentially a substandard of the overall requirement. So if you're required to do three, and you have three, or if you're required to do six, and you have three double-row islands, three of those six are required within those islands. In the previous proposal, we also had a standard that said, one out of every two of the single-row islands would also require a tree. So if you had, in this case, four single-row islands, that would necessitate two trees. That would mean that if you had six trees required overall, and two of these four are required, and all three of these required to have a tree in them, then five of your six required trees would go in those islands. What we heard is a lot of concern about placing trees in islands, whether it be because of visibility or just preference on where those get located. And so by removing that single-row requirement, what that allows is for a larger percentage of the required trees to be located in other places beyond the internal islands. So they would be required to plant the three here, but the other three could be planted along these edges if they wanted to. Items 6, 7, 8 are very similar, and similar to that recommendation, they provide some additional flexibility in where trees are, shade trees are located for parking lots under certain circumstances. So one of the things we heard from Planning Commission, as well as Urban Design Committee, as well as some of our meetings with design consultants, is there was a desire to use those islands potentially for a stormwater management solution. We are not necessarily, as part of this proposal, encouraging or requiring stormwater management in those islands, but we have said that if they're going to be used for a stormwater management solution that includes landscaping, that the trees that would otherwise be required in those islands can be moved out to the perimeter of the parking lot without penalty. Similarly, with number seven, the new proposal says that if those islands are being used for a water-efficient landscape, like native plantings, ornamental grasses, perennials that can survive with minimal irrigation, and that's how they want to use those islands, that again, they could take the required trees for those islands and move them out to the perimeter. Item eight is something that I believe also came up at a discussion with Planning Commission. The specific example that was used here was that if you had a light in a island, that the shade tree might conflict with that light pole. So we made the proposal a little more general than that, and said, if there is another site element being used in that island that conflicts with a full-size shade tree, that in those circumstances, we might allow other types of trees. So that might be an ornamental tree, in some cases, it could possibly be an evergreen tree, but there's going to be some flexibility in the type of tree that could be planted if it's accommodating another element. And then the final item on this memo is more of a clarification to clearly state what the intent of the street tree requirement would be. We heard some concern about being able to place street trees in built environments where there simply was no room for trees currently, and this was always the intent, but it wasn't necessarily explicitly written within the proposal. We've now added it in, and it says essentially, during the permit review process, if Parks and Recs were to determine that there is not enough room, and they have standards for where there is and isn't enough room, that they can exempt that requirement, and they can do it during the permitting process without any additional waivers. It's simply a plan review decision that gets made in the moment, and that could either be an elimination of all the required trees, or in some cases, it might be eliminating, say, two of the three that were required, and then it's as simple as that. So hopefully, that not only addresses that concern, but makes it an easy process to get through. So those are the nine changes, and I hope I explained those well, but if not, just open it up to questions.
Questions?
I'd just like to clarify the ninth point, that Parks and Rec can exempt the street tree requirement, but not any other tree requirement?
No. Any other exemption would probably have to go through the standard waiver process, and I guess that depends on the circumstances. But in general, because the street trees are in the right-of-way, and because we consistently have issues with finding room in right-of-way in certain districts, it makes sense to just exempt it without requiring that waiver process.
Okay.
Dick, and then Dean.
On number six, just a point of clarification, there are several species of trees that can go in the storm basins that work very effectively. So I don't see a problem with how you revised it, but if we were to be designing that, we would show some trees in there.
And I think we'd appreciate that.
My question was just, you said you had meetings with the development community, and these are a result of both sides coming together and agreeing on these? Was there any disagreement on any of the changes?
We had the meetings, as we kind of built upon these meetings one by one. So that first meeting, we had some suggestions in mind after the fact, but they didn't get to see those suggestions until that actual memo went out. So although I believe a lot of these were direct results of those conversations, and I think they're valid compromises, I can't speak for the other parties on whether this is exactly what they wanted. It's probably not in every case, but it is, from our perspective, a concerted and valid effort to find some common ground.
But you didn't hear back from them after the...
I think we heard informally from some folks that it was an improvement, and I don't know that we heard much beyond that.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else?
A question on something else. Going back to the 50% trigger, who is doing this, and how's it working out for those communities? Did you, I mean, did you pull this for best practices around the country, or is this kind of your own creation?
Are you specifically just talking about the 50%?
Yes.
So I may ask, I may ask Stacy to weigh in on that, because in reality, this threshold already exists in our downtown design standards.
Okay, so we're doing it.
So we're, that the answer is yes, we're doing it.
Okay, Stacy, would you mind?
I can't really speak to where it comes from in the downtown design standards, I can make a guess, I guess, but this 50% rule was, for street trees, was coming directly from that. And it was just a threshold to say, what is a minor remodel, and what's a major remodel, and to distinguish between them. So in downtown design standards, we use that language to decide which standards they need to meet, or how flexible we will be with them, depending on new construction or remodels.
So the 50% triggers design, the downtown design standards, to the exterior of the building, or does it have to do with the streetscape? Because it doesn't apply to street trees, right, because it doesn't require street trees downtown.
Right. It does not.
So what is it, what does it trigger in terms of what types of requirements?
It says that if it's a major remodel where they're investing 50% or more of the assessed value, then they have to meet basically as many standards as are feasible with what their existing site conditions are, and those standards would be things like transparency along the street and building materials, how the building is oriented to the street. There are some landscape standards, which I believe are moved to the screening and landscaping now for the parking lots, so they would be applied through that, but mostly related to the building itself.
And that goes for interior remodels as well?
All interior, if it's strictly interior work, then it doesn't apply to that.
Even if it's more than 50% of the construction value? So it's not an apples-to-apples comparison necessarily with this language? Am I understanding?
Well, we did revise it, right, to exclude, if it's only exterior work, then this requirement, the street tree requirement doesn't apply either.
Interior.
Yeah, sorry, did I say it wrong? Yes, if it's strictly interior work, then the standard doesn't apply.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Anything else for staff? Okay, thank you. We will take testimony in support. We will take testimony in opposition.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, I'm Mark Hunsicker, appearing on behalf of B&amp;J Partnership. We were here last time, I did this once before, but I want to go through this in a little bit more general way and have Ann address some specifics. We do appreciate the changes that were offered by the Planning Department. I think they do make some improvements to what is otherwise not a particularly helpful set of new standards. They really aren't sufficient, however, to address the problems that are inflicted upon older parts of the city by these new standards. We met with the Planning Department, and there was some, we were presented with a couple of aerial photos depicting the O Street corridor and South Street corridor, and we agree that those are not particularly models for urban redevelopment, and that they should be encouraged to be redeveloped. But it's important for, and it's important for those areas to redevelop, because the health of the surrounding residential areas really depends on having good viable commercial services and goods available to them conveniently. And our client has probably redeveloped and owns more of those areas than almost anyone in town, so we have a little experience with it, and they intend to do that, they continue to do that. The problems are, in these areas, are primarily site assembly. A lot of the modern commercial enterprises require more space, better access, and more parking than when they were developed decades ago. Many of the sites have lost land to street widens. An assembly of several parcels is usually necessary to be an economically viable unit. It's expensive, it's time-consuming, it often involves clearing title issues, it often involves some environmental issues, particularly with old filling stations and the like, and of course, the fees involved in doing all that. There are limited building envelopes available in those corridors, because the depth of the lots is not very great. Usually, we're talking about lots that began as 142 feet deep, and oftentimes, they are less than that, again, due to street widens and other right-of-way activities. The proposed regulations exacerbate those problems, and having reductions in required parking, for example, is okay, but both landlords and tenants want to have enough parking for their customers. And most importantly, buildings virtually always outlast tenants. So you really need to have a building that's going to be viable, even if the tenant you have immediately for the next 10 years doesn't really need very much parking, you need to make sure you have enough space available and the ability to provide enough parking for another user. Regulations that have the effect of reducing either building envelopes or the number of parking stalls that can be created really inhibit the redevelopment process and result in deferral of redevelopment until additional land can be acquired and assembled, and that just means further deterioration and less encouraging surroundings for the residential areas to use. So if you're serious, and I think we should be, about encouraging redevelopment of those older commercial corridors, then you really ought to establish a working group of owners and developers and neighbors and plan for it. Actually, plan for the redevelopment of those corridors rather than just regulate it more. We need sub-area plans that encompass areas beyond the areas that are currently zoned for commercial uses. Planning for wider, deeper sites for commercial and multifamily uses in those corridors would go a long way toward encouraging that kind of activity, but you really need to take some of the risk out of that by telling people and giving notice that that's what you really want. You can't encourage people by bringing the hammer of more regulation onto the parking lots that they will need to establish as they go through that process. So again, we have a few things we offer to you as changes to this, but I would just say to you, if this is, if this is really intended to result in redevelopment of these corridors and more aesthetically pleasing commercial development along those corridors, this isn't how to get it. You really need to get busy and plan for it and encourage it rather than regulate it.
Questions?
Can you give me an example? You mentioned O Street corridor, South Street corridor, just of something that has been developed or been thought of and couldn't happen?
Well, one place that I always look at and just kind of shake my head and wish that there had been, or there was a way to encourage a redevelopment is an area, I used to live near the 17th and South street area, where there's a Walgreens on the corner. It's a Walgreens that is, I don't know, probably about a third smaller than their standard stores these days, but it can't expand, because it's not, there's not a sufficient amount of zoned land for it, and every effort that's been made to try and improve it has been pushed away. That site needs to be bigger by quite a bit. It has, it has land that runs all the way over to Ryan's, but it doesn't, it doesn't really have the ability to expand, because the parking lot just east of that Walgreens is not zoned commercial. And every time anybody suggests it otherwise, then they've been rebuffed. I mean, it's those kinds of sites, but you could go west on South Street and see on both sides, areas that could very easily redevelop if they had more space. And it's true on O Street, it's true on North 48th Street, North 27th Street, South 27th Street. You can find those areas on all the older arterial streets in town, and if you really want to see them redevelop and be viable and vibrant, those sites need to get bigger in order to be able to... need to get bigger in order to be able to do that.
Dick?
Uh, Mark, um, in my reading through the, not only revisions, but the, uh, entire document, it does allow for a waiver process. And, um, what is wrong with, as those projects appear, that the waiver is considered?
There's nothing wrong with waivers except this. Every time some, I mean, when, when projects get planned, they, they plan around the rules that exist. And when it, when it comes time to really get serious about spending money on projects, it, it costs money to come in here and lay down a, a plan and ask for a waiver and push through a, 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 a planning commission and sometimes city council action on a waiver. The real, the, the real detriment that you will never see is projects that simply don't see the light of day because of, because of regulations like this that say, oh yeah, you can get a waiver. And maybe today, that's true. I mean, I, I don't have any basis for, for denying that, that the people who are now in charge are, are, you know, are going to be very reasonable about granting waivers whenever they're needed. But that's not always been the case, I, in my experience. I can, I can, and, and Dick, you've been around as long as I have, you know that it's not always been the case that there's a lot of flexibility when it comes to, to waiving standards. And so, maybe there is today, maybe there isn't, but, you know, who knows what that's going to be if you put this into the code and, and five years from now, we have a different planning director and several different staff members.
Tom?
You know, this example and, and Commissioner Campbell's question, um, it's been a while since I've been to that Walgreens, but I don't believe it has a drive-through.
Does not.
So, you know, for, in that example, for exam, for that user, it's, it's now obsolete in a certain way because that business model has gone to drive-through pharmacies. That's pretty commonplace today.
It's not even open twenty-four hours anymore.
And I wonder if, if, um, if a body such as the, the Planning Department or the Planning Commission would grant a waiver for landscape requirements in a situation like that for, for a user that wanted to install a drive-through that would eat up additional land? I don't know the answer to that. But it's, it's an interesting, I, I don't know what, what a, what a commission would say in terms of, well, they don't have to install a drive-through. But in today's world, a drive-through for that business model is pertinent.
Sandra and I both live kind of in that area and we know the place well.
I walk to that Walgreens and walk indoors.
But that's not what this is intended to address.
No, no, but what I want to say is I, the question that Tom asked was very pertinent about, you know, would, would there be a waiver that we could do for drive-throughs? Because that's not a very big lot, you know?
It's not, but I, I think, I'm, I'm more interested in the idea of, um, one, I believe that the waiver process is effective and can be effective. I can't speak to ten years into the future. I don't know who's going to be sitting here in ten years. But this problem looks to me like an opportunity to think about redevelopment corridors and old sections of Lincoln on our, along arterials. And it's a pretty specific issue.
Right.
And I, you know, I'm, I'm sitting here looking for sub, sub-area plans for, you know, basically historic neighborhoods or old neighborhoods.
They're not done anymore because there's not enough money in the budget.
And I'm thinking that, that that really is the solution along O Street, along South Street, along, excuse me, along North Forty-Eighth, that those are the kinds of things we need. And if it's a budget issue, then I think we, we bring up that in a different, uh, a different format. But, um, I don't know that the proposal is particularly damaging because of the challenges of older neighborhoods. I think there's perhaps another solution, and it may not be the solution that your client wants.
I think we should finish taking testimony.
Yeah, I agree.
And then go to...
And then we can discuss, yes.
If I might just add one comment. I, you know, this, I'm not offering these changes as a solution to that problem. I'm just suggesting that the changes that are being proposed, as they affect older and smaller sites, will have a negative impact on redevelopment activity that would otherwise occur. It will slow it down, it will defer it into the future, or eliminate it entirely on some sites.
Okay, we're good? Okay, thanks. Testimony in opposition.
Good afternoon. My name is Ann Post. I'm an attorney with Baylor Ebner Law, Ebner Law Firm. I'm here on behalf of B and J Partnership. And, uh, Mr. Hunsaker walked through the reasons why the proposed text amendment are particularly harmful to those smaller, shallower sites. And really, our opposition to this based on the fact that the result will be to significantly delay redevelopment on those corridors and on those smaller sites. So what I'd like to talk about are the suggestions for amendments to this text amendment that would help alleviate some of those problems. So first would be to retain the exception from the screening requirements for lots with an average lot depth of less than a hundred and fifty square feet. Currently, there is an exception in the zoning code and for screening of lots less than a hundred and fifty square feet. This was done because there is a previous recognition.
Just feet, not square feet.
Just feet, not square feet, I think, is what you're...
Yes, yes, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Depths, yeah.
Um, this was done because there's previously recognized that these are small lots. Every square foot that you dedicate to screening, uh, reduces what you can do with that lot. That's why the exception was in place. And even with this text amendment today, the facts haven't changed. So that's why we are asking that we retain this exception to, um, allow redevelopment of those lots. Uh, ne- the next one we're asking for is to retain the exception from screening between parking lots. As the proposed amendment, sorry, there's amendment to amendment, so I'm tripping over it a little bit. If I, if I confuse it, I'll step back. In the current zoning code, there's an exception to screening requirements where two parking lots abut each other. The idea supposedly being that screening is so you don't have to look at what's on the other side of the screen. And when you, it doesn't really make sense to screen one parking lot from the other one. So parking lot doesn't have to look on parking lot. The proposed text amendment would get rid of that, so you would have to screen cars so that cars can't look at cars. Again, this is something that reduces the square footage, will impact those smaller lots, so that it is just less square feet we have to work with when we're trying to bring redevelopment into those corridors in Lincoln. So we would ask to retain that exception that is currently in the zoning code. Third would be to exempt parking lots less than six thousand square feet from the shade tree and interior landscaping requirements. The idea being, these are small parking lots. And while the proposed changes to the proposed text amendment, uh, does eliminate some of the, uh, well, does reduce some of the requirements for that, in these smart, small parking lots, there's still the requirement to have that landscaping island at the beginning and end of each row. And that takes up parking stalls in very small parking lots, which again, makes redevelopment in these areas more expensive and less feasible. And our final, uh, specific, uh, proposal is to eliminate the requirement for street trees as a condition of the building permitting process for remodeling projects that exceed fifty percent of assessed value. So that is the, uh, requirement to include street trees where you, well, like I just said, where you have a major remodeling project. This will inhibit remodeling of, uh, even smaller, smaller being, you know, less than raising, but smaller remodeling projects for those lots. Because you'll have to work for, they will become more expensive once we have to start looking at street trees and whether we need a waiver and where we can locate those street trees. So with that, um, those are our, the four things we've asked for. Um, I'm, will ask if you have any questions.
Do you have those in writing?
Um, I have them in handwriting, and I can get them in an email to the Planning Commission because no one can read my handwriting.
I have a quick question for Ann.
Yes.
Um, so, proposal of no street tree requirement for remodeling projects, but no issue with new construction?
Yeah, we have not asked for that for new construction.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
I'm try, um, I need to look at the memo again, but the elimination requirement for street trees for fifty percent exterior remodeling, fifty percent plus exterior remodeling. So it's not, you're not arguing about the interior where there's no requirement for it. You're, you're saying that it's, that the exterior remodeling, that this will just make the cost so much higher?
I'm saying that, uh, when we have one of those small lots, and I believe the amendment to the amendment, to be very clear, that was talked about today was that if there's, we, uh, do remodeling of more than fifty percent of the, of the assessed value, but that that is only on the exterior, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Anyway, so I think that many of those lots, uh, sometimes they're in better states than others, but the more, uh, we don't want to discourage remodeling, especially remodeling of the exterior. And if, our issue is, if we remodel that, we have to have street trees and we don't have room for street trees, we're going to have to go through this process of working, working through the Planning Commission to be able to do that. That adds lots of time and expense. And I know that there is, uh, also language about, um, trees in the right of way, but that is, it's still a waiver process, and it still is going to add square footage time and expense.
Dick? Uh, Ann, um, on your exemption of screening from parking lot to parking lot.
Yes.
I assume you're, it, it's referring to where they do not connect?
That's right. Where they don't share a drive aisle. And, um, I, I believe that there's some intent that this would encourage adjacent land owners to share a drive aisle for better circulation. And we agree that, yes, that would add better circulation. Sometimes you're going to have issues where adjacent uses, um, can't get along, adjacent landowners can't get along. And so the problem is, while it, it would always be in everyone's best interest that they find a way to get along, to get those drive aisles, to improve circulation for everyone, that's just not always the case. And so in those cases where based completely on not being able to work with your neighbor, you're going, having a neighbor who won't work with you, you're going to lose that square footage, and it's going to limit what you can do to redevelop that site.
Anyone else?
All right, I have a que, I'm going to go back and clarify something else. When you are requesting the elimination of street tree requirement, um, are you requesting that only for small lots or for all parking lots?
Our main interest is in small lot, is in the, the small lots. Of course, I don't think we would object at it being for all lots.
But you'd said less than six thousand square feet, right?
Um, when we talked about six thousand square feet, uh, that was specific...
Not street trees.
Those are street trees, right? Those are landscaping requirements and then the shade trees and the islands, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
And then when we're talking about street trees, Ann, I was, my takeaway was that we're only talking about remodeled projects, and that's it?
Yes.
Okay. With no square footage requirements at all?
That's right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, Ann, quick question for you.
Yes.
With the clients that you represent that are redeveloping in older neighborhoods, how many of them are remodeling, would you say? I mean, ballpark me, obviously. But how many are remodeling because they have a specific tenant coming into a place that, that, that needs a different setup or a different look? And how many are just remodeling because they want to improve their, their center?
Tom, I think Mark could give you a better answer to that. Uh, my feeling is that a lot of times it would be for the specific tenant has specific requirements, they have, you know, if we use Starbucks as an example, if they were going to come into a location, they have very specific requirements for how their inside looks and what their outside needs to look like.
And if these requirements, Ann, messed with the requirements of that tenant coming in, what's the likelihood of that tenant saying, I'm not going there?
They're, they're not going there. I mean, it's very, very high. They're just, if, they can't get the look that they need, especially with some of the national chains, their look and that consistency and look and atmosphere is extremely important. If they can't achieve that, they're not going in there.
Thank you.
I, I have difficulty imagining that that exterior remodel is going to exceed fifty percent of the value of that, appraised value of that property. Um, I don't, don't see how it's going to add up to that much dollars.
Um, so are you saying that you don't think that there is likely going to be an occasion where that fifty percent remodel, um, triggers anything for street trees?
I, I don't.
I would think, I would argue that, I probably agree with that, but in the off chance that it, well, maybe Mark Hunsaker could talk a little bit more about the cost of that. But in, in the chance that it does, um, I don't think people would want to preclude that exterior remodel.
Where does it say that it's not for, for in, in, only for exterior? I don't see that. It is, where does it say that? It says major remodeling or investment in a property where the total investment as defined by total construction valuation exceeds fifty percent of the property's assessed value. So are, are we, I, I don't see this, um, only exterior language. Where, where is it in the proposal?
Um, I think that that would be...
That's a staff question.
We'll ask staff that.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay.
I just want to ask her questions and then, and have her respond to something if it's not correct.
So if you want to, if you want to, um, address Maya's question, go ahead, but then we'll get staff up here too.
Okay.
Yep.
First, I think that is a question best answered by staff. And I know that in the, uh, I would assume it is in the amendment to the amendment that is, uh, was provided two days ago.
And, in, in most of the developed areas, the street trees are already in. So I don't see that there's going to be many instances that they're going to have to be put in.
I, I, I could see smaller buildings along O Street, especially from Twenty-seventh to Forty-Fifth, that are very low assessed value, that if you added a new facade of a stone veneer, I think you could hit that number.
Okay, again, this is discussion, and I think that we need to deal with...
Yeah, I agree. We have a, we have a testimony going here.
If you have any specific questions for Ann that are not discussion, now is the time for that.
Okay. So anything else to address to Ann?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Now we'll go to staff questions. So I know we have at least one staff question.
We don't have anyone else wanting to testify.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I didn't see back there. I thought we had an empty room here. Testimony in opposition.
Thank you.
I'll keep this short. Uh, my name's Dustin Antonello, and I'm here on behalf of the Lincoln Independent Business Association. So, um, the Lincoln Independent Business Association, first of all, would like to thank the Planning Department for considering our concerns regarding the proposed amendments to the design standards for screening and landscaping. The changes proposed by the Planning Department are a significant improvement over the initial proposal. We especially appreciate the Planning Department's willingness to relax some of the internal landscape island requirements. How reliva still remains opposed to some screening and street tree requirements in the text amendment. Liba particularly requests that the Planning Department maintain the screening exception for shallow lots with an average lot depth of less than one hundred and fifty feet, um, and also remove the requirement for street trees as a condition of the building permitting process for major remodeling projects that exceed fifty percent of the property's current assessed value. Uh, we believe these, uh, requirements will make it extremely difficult to redevelop smaller lots in older areas of town where there's limited, uh, space. These conditions will severely limit redevelopment opportunities in areas like South Street, Leon's Food Mart Shopping Center on Winthrop Road, the Shopko Shopping Center near Bishop Heights Park, and corners like Thirty-third and A, Seventeenth and Van Dorn, and Thirty-third and Pioneers. Again, Liba appreciates the Planning Department's willingness to listen to our feedback and make substantial changes to the initial proposal. We believe the proposal has dramatically improved, but we feel like it can be further enhanced if the screening exception for shallow lots is maintained and the street tree requirements for remodels are removed prior to consideration by the City Council. Thank you for your time. I'll be happy to answer your questions.
Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll have an opportunity for staff questions.
Help us understand the fifty percent trigger and how it... Help us understand the 50% trigger and how it relates to exterior and interior, please.
So you may have an old version of this language because there's a sentence at the end that was revised prior to that November 14th planning commission where we specifically addressed this issue of exterior versus interior. So I'll just read it.
Can you make that bigger, please, much? Zoom, zoom. I think is what it's called. Perfect.
This condition shall not include improvement projects solely intended to address interior remodels or tenant finishes where the exterior of the building and site are not being impacted.
So if they are only remodeling the interior, it will not trigger street trees?
Correct.
So in that sense, it's different from the downtown design standards where it would trigger like things like windows and things, transparency, if you were to-
I believe with downtown design standards, it's similar in that if it is purely interior, those standards don't go into effect. So I think it is a similar comparison.
Okay.
So Colin, I know that you had used, let's say, the 33rd and O Street Godfathers example. That building was interior and exterior remodel. Talk to me about that.
It was, you're right. What's your question specifically?
Is it self-reporting? Is that how you will determine valuation for costs?
So when you do a building permit, whether it's just for the building or for site improvements as well, you are required to provide a total construction valuation. So that would be one part of that calculation. The intent is to automate the assessed value so that when it goes into the system, it will pull from our GIS system and input the assessed value at the date that they submit that permit.
Sure.
And it would do that calculation.
So does that permit differentiate between interior and exterior today?
There are classifications of permit types. That's not to say that someone, something couldn't slip through the cracks when a, you know, a developer comes in with a set of plans that include exterior work and they call it an interior remodel.
Sure. So if I went and looked at the permit for the Godfathers at 33rd and O, it would differentiate between the interior remodel dollar amount and the exterior dollar remodel amount?
I believe it would give you a total construction value. It wouldn't separate-
So how, how, how will planning department make that differentiation?
So there will be, first of all, you would have a, essentially a box that says, this is an interior remodel, this is a project redevelopment, this is new construction. If it falls into one of those categories that might trigger street trees, then you then go to that percentage calculation. If it, the classification just says interior remodel, there's no, there's no calculation needed.
And I'm sorry, what is the, the, the percentage calculation? Could you detail that? I mean-
It would be the total construction valuation divided by the assessed value at the time of the permit request. And if that goes above 50%, and again, it's in that interior remodel classification, that's when that street tree requirement would kick in.
Okay, so maybe I'm confused.
Don't you mean exterior?
Tell me again, using the 33rd and O Street Godfathers example, with that building permit, how will planning department differentiate exterior versus interior remodel costs and whether or not that would kick out the street tree requirement?
There's no intent to differentiate the cost, meaning that the intent is to decide, is this, what is the total construction valuation and does that, some of that money being used for that project go, go towards the exterior of the site?
So when we remodel an existing building and touch both the interior and exterior, the total construction dollar amount will be used to, to trigger the street tree requirement?
Correct.
Okay. Could you discuss whether or not planning feels as though the inclusion of a drive-through to facilitate a business model is enough of a justification to waive landscaping requirements?
I really honestly think it would depend on the site and the circumstances. I will tell you, looking at the example that was presented, which is the Walgreens-
Sure.
On South Street, the issue there would not be landscape screen because they have on that one side, a very narrow fence that they used to screen from the residential. That is something that would almost never be waived because we do want that screen from residential properties. And so if they were going to add a drive-through, really what that means is that they'd have to get rid of parking. So in that circumstance, I don't think the landscape plays a role in, in what might happen there. In general, under the right circumstances, would we be willing to consider that? Yeah, but without knowing more specifics, I, I don't know that I can give you a-
Sure.
So really, that's not a good example that would apply to this because it's not landscaping that would, you know, that is affecting that, it's proximity to residential.
Yes, that's, and I would say further, that site as it's developed now without the drive-through has every ability, even as tight as it is, to meet the proposed standard. They have room for islands. They in fact have islands, they just have concreted them.
Sure.
And they do have a screen between them and the residential.
Sure. But just thinking outside of that example, and that very specific example there, the, the, the change of, of a tenant who needs to rearrange their outdoor use, whatever that is, maybe that's storage, maybe that's a drive-through, doesn't, would not necessarily kick in an automatic waiver from the planning department, you do not feel. It will be a case-by-case basis and a case-by-case evaluation.
Unless there was some precedent that we decided to set based on previous examples that we had done and we felt like they had worked out successfully, as it is now, we don't really have anything that really allows for that automatic waiver process. So-
Okay.
It is always going to be, unless we make a change, it is for now going to be a case-by-case basis.
Okay. Could we go through the items that Ms. Post went through as well?
Yeah.
I'm assuming that planning has no change in thought with the exemption of 150-foot depth lots? Because we saw nothing in your memo?
No.
Okay. No change in thought in screening between parking lots? Okay. No change in landscaping requirements or shade tree requirements for lots less than 6,000 square feet?
No.
And no street trees for remodel, remodeling projects? No changes there?
No.
Did you, did staff engage with, with other developers besides Ms. Post in these discussions?
Yes.
Okay.
I would say of all the developers and consultants that they, that we did meet with, Mr. Hunsaker and Ms. Post were the most adamant, specifically about the shallow lot exemptions and, and the parking lot, adjacent parking lot exemptions.
Can you review again why you want the screening between adjacent parking lots?
Sure. So this is honestly a difficult one to explain because the initial thought would be, well, why do you screen a parking lot? One from the other. I just want to go back quickly and read our intent for the screening part of our design standards. It says, "It is the intention of the screening standards for parking lots and parking areas to provide an adequate aesthetic visual screen of the facility while not seriously impairing observation of the lot from public ways for the sake of security." So the question that I would start with is what is it about one parking lot being in close proximity to another parking lot that would make us say that it's no longer important to meet that intent? And one of those explanations might be that in our older neighborhoods and districts, that we've got a lot of funky stuff happening, where it's really a challenge to fit all the necessary parking spaces into a fairly tight collection of lots. So this is an area around that same spot, 33rd and O. You can see all these properties that have their own parking lots. And one of the reasons why you might not want to do that screening is because you do have some overlapping and feeding of one parking lot into another. So if you look at this example, this lot feeds into this lot, both of those feed into this lot. There is a lot of connectivity and requiring them to screen from one another would be a serious impairment on their ability to get the parking stalls that are, that are necessary for their projects or for their developments. But the other end of it is when you have parking lots that are completely separate from one another, that don't function as one, like this, where you have the car wash over here and the Jiffy Lube, I believe, over here, it's not just about screening this lot from this lot. This is a major roadway and you can see into this parking lot from this roadway. And you can see into this parking lot from this roadway. So when we don't require those parking lots to be screened from one another, what we're allowing is this. And planning department believes that is an unacceptable separation between parking lots and that if we had landscape screening along this edge, this would be a significantly better development and would be a major improvement for the aesthetic of O Street. And with all these exemptions, whether it's a shallow lot exemption or it's the parking lot exemption, we have to look at this from a broader perspective, not just of how this impacts one individual property, but really how it impacts the larger corridor or district. And, you know, I think we heard a lot from Mark and from Anne that there is concern about these exemptions being removed having a negative impact on redevelopment. And I, I want to say we certainly understand that. It's not something that we haven't considered. But if you look at this aerial, this is a stretch from 24th Street to 44th Street along O Street. So we're talking about 20 blocks. And I identified with a dot each property that falls under that 150-foot exemption where they have parking lot in the front and they are not required to screen that because of that exemption. Of those 30, you see two are green dots. Those are the two that have screened on their own. The three in yellow are those that have some level of screening that doesn't get to the standard, but there's something there. And then you have 25 properties that have done absolutely zero screening. And so I'm not going to tell you that every one of those properties has room for park, for screening of their parking lot, but I will tell you that a majority of them do as they're currently configured. And what we're doing by allowing this exemption is essentially taking the worst-case scenario where there is just no room, like the Starbucks. There is no room for landscape screening for that site. And we have applied that across the board. And we, we have said, this worst-case scenario should dictate our entire design standard. And to us, that is a problem that we should be trying to solve. One, you know, I review every landscape plan that comes into the city. I have a unique perspective and I get to see what certain developers are doing. And they essentially fall into three categories. There's a group at the top, let's say the top 15%, and they go above and beyond and they don't even need a design standard to look at because they're going to give you great development. And a lot of those, even though it's a small percentage, a lot of those are high-profile projects. They have great value to the community, but as a percentage of permits that we see, it's a pretty small group. Then you have a much larger group in the middle, 60 to 70% of developers, that at least when it comes to landscape screening, they are doing what's asked of them and not anything more than that. And that's okay. But that, but they're going to give you what you ask for. And then at the bottom, you have the lower-tier developers that don't want to give you anything. And they don't want to give you a landscape plan. And when they do, they don't want to install it. And that's just kind of the reality. The important group there is that middle group. It's that 60 or 70% that are going to do what you ask them to do and not anymore. And if you have a set of design standards that are subpar, you're going to get a subpar product and it's going to negatively impact your built environment. So our hope in improving these standards is to raise that minimum standard so that when developers are meeting the minimum, that minimum is good enough. And it's especially good enough for our older districts and our older neighborhoods that really suffer from this allowance, this exemption that exists. So that when these properties get redeveloped, if there's room, as we balance the need for a building and a parking lot and landscaping, that we don't want to make landscaping the number one priority, but we do want to make it a priority. And we do want to find room for it where we can.
Colin, is there any correlation between the groups you just mentioned and national developers versus local developers?
I think we see in general, national developers coming in on big projects are giving us a lot of times more than what we would typically ask for.
So they're, they're going above and beyond the current standards that we have in place?
Correct.
So would it be fair to say, and this sounds really harsh and I'm sorry, but it's our local developers that are giving pushback against us?
No, I would not agree with that statement. I, I think what we heard from a lot of the groups in our people-
But are those the ones-
No, for, for instance, we met with Lincoln Zura of Hampton Enterprises, who was very clear, and Colin made it clear in our meeting, Williamsburg Village goes far and above all of the other development requirements. So I, I don't think this is really meant to be a local versus-
Can I finish my question?
Yes, but I, I just want to make sure it's clear. That's not really the intent is to try to differentiate one group from the other.
So do a majority of our local developers fall into that middle group that you were talking about?
Well, it's a large group, so I would say in general, that's where most people fit in. Yes, that's fair. But there are, like Steve mentioned, there are a lot of local developers that are doing great work. And the reality is that most of those developers are the ones that attended our meetings and provided feedback. Because we did, I mean, we did look at the individual developers that were at those meetings and across the board, they're doing really good work. But, but there's a-
The ones that are willing to compromise with you and come up with a better standard that works for everyone involved?
Yeah.
Other questions?
So, thanks for pointing me to the revised language of the 50% trigger. So question, if I want to do an interior remodel and I, I upgrade my windows and I decide to do bigger windows, have I affected the exterior? Am I triggering street trees?
Can I, can I just add to that? Because I have the same question I was going to ask.
Yeah, sure.
In Maya's example, if, if I want to do an interior renovation and I do my windows and the interior renovation of the, as a percentage of the total renovation cost is 90%, 95% of that total cost, and the windows are 5% or 10%, because the total cost is above the 50% threshold, is just because I'm doing a 5% of that cost exterior renovation, does that kick it into street tree?
I think that's a totally fair question. I'm not sure that I have the answer to that. I'm not sure. It may be that we need to dig in and provide a little bit additional detail on that requirement. My personal opinion would be that if it is an interior project and the windows are part of that, and the windows certainly exist on the exterior but also on the interior, that that would not trigger this. But I'm also not an architect, so.
Yeah, there's a little bit of gray area. That's probably where you're going to.
As I understood it earlier, the measure, the tool that you would use would be total remodel cost.
Yeah, and if a project like that existed, that would be calculated as an interior remodel. It would not be considered an exterior.
It feels like the first trigger is what you've checked on the building permit process, the application. And if you check interior, then your construction costs are the second thing that they look at, but it's not relevant for street trees. If you've checked new construction or whole-site redevelopment-
then your construction costs do matter.
Well, David Carey with the planning, maybe just to shed some clarity on that too. What you just said is what I, part of what I was going to say is the reality is, is that we are confident that we are flexible enough and understand how we can identify what project is doing what. I think that that's something that we're confident in and that's why we're confident with that measure being included in these, this proposed set of standards. And along with that, so what Sandra, you just said is completely accurate is the reality is that project is almost assuredly going to be checked off as an interior remodel. Now, there may be instances where that may not happen and we would take a closer look at that. But we on a staff level are aware that those things can happen. We will be flexible enough to be able to address that. I will also point out that a reason why that 50% threshold is in there is so that for those products that are truly for exterior site work type of projects, that we feel confident that those are the types of products at that level, not the interior remodels, but the exterior remodels, at that level of improvement, we should get a street tree in there. That, that, that's why it's there. That's why we think that that's a good thing. So I don't want to shy away from why it's in there in the first place. We feel like that's an important thing and street trees are a good thing and we should try to get those where we can. So we don't have this kind of missing tooth feel for some of our corridors, especially like Colin pointed out. So I just want to kind of clarify, the, the point of having it in there in the first place is a good reason for it to be there.
Thanks, I think that helps.
Dennis?
Yes, Dick.
I have, Colin, I have a, in my mind, as this discussion has gone along, if you're going to take the remodel costs, be it interior or exterior, against the assessed valuation. In these older neighborhoods, that valuation is going to be pretty low. It's because of the condition of the property and so on. And so I'm wondering if it shouldn't be, and I don't know if this can be done, but placed against the renovated valuation for the 50% criteria?
I just want to be clear, this is only, the 50% only applies to exterior, correct?
Correct. But I think what you're proposing, when you say, you're basically proposing a future assessed value?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know how we can calculate that in the moment is the, is the issue there. I mean, we're making that determination at the point of building permit. We don't know what the future assessed value is going to be.
At what point will the assessor set that? Once the project's finished?
Yes, at some point in the future. I mean...
Unless, unless it's a TIF project.
And it only seems fair that you're only going to be assessed some future value when that future happens. I mean, nobody wants to be taxed on a project while it's...
I would also just point out, especially because you're talking about older neighborhoods where there are smaller lots, in most cases, we're talking about one tree. So this is not a, I don't want to say that there's no burden there, but it's not a significant burden compared to the overall cost of the project in most cases.
Other questions?
No.
Thank you. Okay, I think we are ready to entertain a motion.
Move approval as amended by staff from their 1210 memo?
Second, Campbell?
Okay, discussion?
I am really, I'm happy that the process allowed for staff to go back and talk to developers and we could put this application on hold until that had happened. And I'm, I feel confident that staff did talk to folks who were going to be affected and spoke sincerely with them. I am, I'm also interested in how we can add back sub-area development planning to address the issues that Mark and Ann brought up about older neighborhoods and commercial districts. And I realize budgets are what budgets are. And so I can't magically create more money for the city of Lincoln. But I would like to look at how we might be able to bring that kind of planning back.
Good point.
I'd like to move to amend. I would like to strike the 50% trigger. And the reason is, I think our discussion at this table has been a sign of some of the confusion that will come with this provision. And it just seems like a recipe for conflict between the city and developers. And I, I understand the reasoning behind it. I, I'm not opposed to street trees or streetscape beautification. But I don't feel comfortable about this particular way that this is being executed. I fear that it will have the opposite effect in some instances where you'll, you'll just put off your exterior improvements and stick to interiors so that you don't trigger the street tree requirement. And granted, it is not a huge expense, but when you, it's the aggregate that matters to your profit margin and when you take into effect the compounded cost of, of the whole package. I, I worry that we will see some redevelopment projects not happening, so...
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, discuss.
I agree with Commissioner Harris. I think that the, the methodology that we have before us today is not perfect in determining whether or not the 50% trigger occurs or not. I would rather have something written that individuals can refer to rather than staff saying, "We think we can fairly appropriate what's interior, exterior, and we think that we can make that justification fairly across the board." I'd rather just have a written rule that an individual can read, follow, logically understand, rather than hoping for the best. And, you know, honestly, you know, if, if I was doing a renovation that, that was both interior and exterior and my interior costs were more than my exterior costs, I'd probably say it's an interior renovation. I don't know that that goes to the intent and purpose that planning staff is seeking here, but that's what I would say.
Anybody else?
Okay, I, I think the comment that this does not trigger a major expense to add what is likely to be one street tree is a big deal. But I do think that the clarity issue is a big one. We've all talked about it and I have some concern about that, so...
Dick?
I agree with what you're saying. It's the clarity of that, of that 50% because basically that street tree is going to cost between $220 and $300. I mean, and when you talk about a renovation that obviously has to be in the thousands, that's not a major, major cost to the project. But I, I do agree, it does not have the clarity that, that it should have.
It's, it's obvious. I mean, Maya's right. Our conversation and our constant trying to reword this so that we understand it shows that there's not clarity. But, you know, I don't, I'm not sure what the solution is today except for to suggest that we hold off again until we have written language. Because I don't want to say, well, let's pass it and then we've passed it and we all know there's a problem. And amending it by saying, "Let's just strike it," it doesn't feel particularly satisfying to me. I like the idea of the requirement of street trees. I think it's important. But I can understand the need for a written clarification of that, a written rule that everybody can understand at the time that they read it. And I think I've just messed up the process.
I understand the need for clarification, but I think a lot of our confusion comes from the fact that it was first interior and exterior and now it's only exterior. And so that's causing some confusion as well. I, if we delay it, I say we delay, we close it to new testimony because I feel that we'll get the same people testifying again.
Okay, let's not talk about delay right now.
My motion is to strike it.
Yeah, let's vote on the motion.
We need to vote, I think. Is there any other discussion about the motion? Okay, let's vote on the motion to amend.
Okay, this is the motion to amend staff's revised proposal by striking the 50% trigger. Second, or moved by Harris, seconded by Beckus.
Correct.
For remodels.
For remodels, okay.
Well, it's just B or whatever it's called, that, yeah.
This is section...
It continues with new construction.
Point one for...
Yep, you're good.
The section B, okay.
Okay.
Okay, Finnegan?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Core?
No.
Washington?
No.
Edgerton?
No.
Harris?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to three.
Okay, now back to the original motion. Additional discussion about that?
I'm very thankful for planning staff's willingness to continue to have continued dialogue. There are still some things here that trouble me a little bit and some things we haven't talked about today, actually. I think reducing the minimum parking requirements for restaurants and on-sale alcohol on the B2 and B5 is, is actually not great for our community. I think it pushes people potentially to be walking more in parking lots further away from businesses. And I'm not sure that that's the most pedestrian-friendly action that we can, we can have. Interior landscape islands within parking lots, while they may be beautiful, do add cost to a development. And it's not just a $160 tree. It's the curbing mostly with that that gets knocked out every year that you have to replace. And then also the increase in open space landscape requirements, even for parking lots above 200 stalls. You know, I'm, I'm, I think of other uses rather than a customer-facing retail use. If we were to look at a manufacturing plant, for example, that had 600 workers on site at a shift. You know, is that parking lot meant to be beautiful? Utilitarian or a mix of both? I don't know. My gut is, is that, that a parking lot in that circumstance is, is utilitarian in nature. I'm not sure that that parking lot needs to be landscaped to the same degree. I, I think that there are options here that don't quite make sense to me as a package. I, I don't know that the proposed changes offered by Ms. Post today are necessarily out of line. I, in certain circumstances, I don't have a problem. You know, for example, at 33 and O, I relish new development at 33 and O. I guess it doesn't give me a whole lot of heartburn not to see a street treat there. I would rather see a remodeled building with a new tenant and a higher tax valuation. I don't think a concrete barrier in between a car wash and a jiffy lube is necessarily the most awful thing in the world either. And I think that some of these things we can do better on. I, and you know, I would rather be talking about pedestrian walkways within large parking lots than landscape islands if we're going to talk about public safety. I'll be voting against the entire package.
Anyone else?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote, I'm gonna support the motion. I understand where Tom is coming from. I deal with those issues sometimes on projects that I have to work on or want to work on. But I think this package, as, as I think staff mentioned a couple of times, the, the, the really good about this package is, is for the overall effect in our city. And I think put together, this does lift the, the overall positive effect of our city along these corridors and throughout the city, even at the edges with new development. So I'm, I'm comfortable with the motion and, and the, and the package that's been created. I too want to thank, before I go any farther, I want to thank not only staff because I know it did take more time and effort and also the, the development community and design community to, to, to spend time to, to work through some of these revisions. I think they're really good revisions. I'm comfortable, the reason I can support this is I am comfortable with our waiver process. I have, I have confidence in our planning staff to be fair about some of these odd things that happen. And I, I, I have confidence that in the, in the future, our staff will continue to, to be of that kind of mind. My biggest concern continues to be, and I can't address it in the text amendment that we're looking at, but my biggest concern continues to be that we ask our parking lots to do more and more on a site almost continuously. And, and what I mean by that is parking lots, first and foremost, need to supply storage for cars. We need to park, right? So we have to provide parking. We have to provide lighting, that takes space. We have to provide landscape, that takes space. We talked about stormwater in the previous meetings. Stormwater is going to be a larger and larger issue in terms of how we handle that with, with the regulations that are coming down from state and federal on our sites. And on most of our sites, that means there is an impact to the parking lot. So I know that the Planning Department has talked about in the future, integrating their efforts with other departments like Public Works and making sure that there's a fair assessment of what the parking lot needs to do. Again, I lean on the waiver process to, to make sure all this can work the right way. But all, all said and done, I, I think this is a good amendment, a good text amendment, and I'm going to support it. I think it's good for our community.
I'm glad, I'm glad and appreciative of the comments because two weeks ago or two meetings ago, I was not here. And frankly, throughout this whole process today, I've been more and more confused. So I appreciate you and your comments. And I think that I am going to also vote yes for this because I do think staff took the, the lead and, and did what they needed to do with the developers. I also think that it's, nothing's perfect and this may not be perfect, but maybe we can look at it at some later time, you know? But I'm going to vote yes.
Okay, we ready to vote? Maya, go ahead.
I'm going to support it as well. I was, my main concern was the 50% rule. But I, if somebody had moved any of the other suggestions, I might have supported all of those. And I suppose I would just put that forward to, to the City Council. And I, I agree with Mr. Hunsaker's idea for a working group to try to revitalize and incentivize redevelopment in, in our older districts. And, and to some extent, I do think the order has been out of whack here where more carrots should have been given to B1 and B3 before these added costs came into play. And I would like, hopefully, our elected officials to, to think about that and try to balance that. And I encourage the development community to participate in, in that, in that discussion. I think this could get even better with more reaching across the aisle, but I'm ready to support it today.
Good comments. Anybody else? Go ahead.
I want to thank staff for going back and talking to the...
I want to thank staff for going back and talking to the development community. I do want to clarify a couple things. I know it sounds like staff presented twice to the mayor's roundtable and to the neighborhood group, and actually, it was, but it was not, because our first meeting, we ran out of time. So basically, they said, "Here's this sheet," and gave it to us. And so, yes, I have to disclose that it was, I was at that meeting, and it was presented, but it wasn't really presented. So we really only had one presentation on these. But some of the other things I want to clarify is that the waiver process, from what I understand, is an administrative, done administratively, so it doesn't have to come back through planning commission. So, you know, when people are coming up here and speaking about the waiver process being so difficult and having to go through planning commission, it would just be administrative amendments, you wouldn't have to go through all of these steps. I also, I like that staff worked with the development community, but a lot of these reasonings for revisions talk about, you know, like taking away stalls that they need and that kind of stuff. Well, that's the other, that's the carrot with this. We're relaxing how many stalls they need to begin with, so these go hand in hand. It already was a compromise to start with. You know, so I get kind of frustrated by this. I also see with our applications that come before us that we have national developers that are already going above and beyond these requirements. And so that indicates to me that other communities already have guidelines, rules in place that are more stringent than ours. And so that kind of tells me we might be falling behind a little bit, and that concerns me, because I don't want, I think of it as your house. Are you going to keep that pink ugly tile in your bathroom from the 60s, or are you going to want to remodel it? You're going to want to remodel it. And so we need to, we need to keep up with the times, too, as a city. As for the abutting parking lots, not only, I firmly believe in the screening, because one thing that wasn't stated today was that we don't know that a abutting parking lot is always going to stay an abutting parking lot. That might change in two, five, 10 years. We don't know. So I really like the screening concept of that. And as for the, you know, separating those parking lots from each other and creating those islands and that kind of stuff, that does go for pedestrian safety, gives them a place to walk. It also goes for automobile safety. When I see some of those examples on O Street, I mean, I can remember the time before those red ugly concrete barriers were in there, you could drive all over and watch out pedestrians if you get in the way. So, but I would much rather see a fence, a tree, something besides that red concrete poster. I think it would do a lot to beautify our city, and I think that that in turn increases our tax base. So I guess I, a lot of the arguments that have been put up today, I just, I don't really buy. I can find something to contradict them. And so I like this package. I would like it even better if we left the 50% in, but what I'm hoping for is that by the time it gets to city council, maybe staff will have a better language that they can propose, or maybe city council can ask them for one, so that we can get that tightened up and compromise on a few other situations.
Okay, I think we're ready to vote.
Okay, this is for approval of text amendment 18014 as amended. Finnegan?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Becky S?
No.
Shear?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to one.
At this time, anyone wishing to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so. I see none, so we are adjourned.